All right, approval of the November 13 minutes. Are any questions, concerns, or errors in the minutes? Did you all get a chance to read them? And if so, I entertain a motion of approval.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of today's agenda. If you looked over today's agenda, I'd entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. PJ, consent calendar.
PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Consent calendar. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item three, conditional use permit review 1530 for Peaceful Pines Valley Hideaway LLC, William &amp; Valerie Landis, to review a multifamily dwelling in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1530 with five conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review 1639 for Troxell Properties LLC. Pam Troxell is the agent. To review a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district, staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1639 with 15 conditions. Item five, conditional use permit review 1640 for John &amp; Polly Preston, to review a caretaker's residence on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1640 with 11 conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1709 for Wesley &amp; Carrie Mental, to review a vacation home rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1709 with 17 conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit 1740 for Richard Burton, to allow for a caretaker's residence on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit 1740 with 10 conditions. Item eight, construction permit 1711 for Greg Lorzell Construction. Lisa Lorzell is the agent. To modify a driveway and install utilities, staff recommends approval of construction permit 1711 with nine conditions. Item nine, construction permit 1712 for Lazy P6 Land Company Incorporated, Orville Davis, to continue work initiated under construction permit 1305, 1402, 1514, and 1609. The proposed project includes stockpiling of soil for future use on site. The condition, reclamation of hay pasture west, oh, two, continue reclamation of hay pasture west of Fifth Street, excuse me. Staff recommends approval of construction permit 1712 with nine conditions. Item 10, construction permit 1713, Western Construction Incorporated, to place a portable asphalt batch plant on the subject property and to level and grade approximately 26 acres with berms and dust control ponds implemented on site. Staff recommends approval of construction permit 1713 with 11 conditions. Item 11, minor plat 1741, Coning Family Trust, Sheila Watkins, trustee, to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot A of Idlewise Mountain Development Number Two. Staff recommends approval of minor plat 1741 with five conditions. Item 12, minor plat 1742 for Carol Marso, D.C. Scott Surveyors is the agent, to create lots 1, 2, and 3 of Redfern Valley subdivision. Staff recommends approval of minor plat 1742 with 11 conditions. Item 13, rezone 1710 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1709, for Dorothy Johnson Estates, Grace Western Bank, personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estates, to rezone 21.39 acres from limited agriculture district to suburban residential district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from PUD-sensitive to suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue rezone 1710 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1709 to the March 12, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item 14, layout plat 1738 for Dorothy Johnson Estates, Great Western Bank, personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estates, to create lots A, B, C, and D of Johnson Estates subdivision. Staff recommends to continue layout plat 1738 to the March 12, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.
Would staff like to pull any items?
Number four, please.
Item number four. Would any membership like to pull any items?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to pull number 10.
Item number 10. Any other items? Any member in the audience, the consent items that were just read off of our agenda, just in case you don't have an agenda, they are on the back bookshelf if you'd like to get one for today. Would anybody in the audience like to pull any of those items off of the consent calendar? The consent calendar means we're going to vote on all the items that are on it in one fell swoop instead of talking about it individually. So if you'd like to talk about one of those items, please let us know. All right, seeing none, I see that we have items four and 10, so that means our consent calendar would be items three, five through nine, 11 through 14. Is that correct? If I did my numbers correctly, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar for those items.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item number four.
Real quick change. Item four is conditional use permit review CU 1639, to review a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. The applicant and agent are Troxell Properties LLC. Pam Troxell is the agent. What we're making a change to is on page five of six of the staff report, condition number one. This was caught by a citizen and provided to our office. It should read that the maximum overnight occupancy based on SDD and our approval continued to be limited to four people and the maximum daytime occupancy be limited to eight people. So we have to put in the word eight. Other than that, staff recommend approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1639 with 15 conditions with the change to condition number one.
All right, recommendation is to approve it with the change to item number one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 10.
Yes, thank you. My question on this one is, I noticed that the, that the city, Public Works noted that there's some limitations on Dias Avenue and that they are concerned that Dias Avenue as it exists today is not adequate to accommodate the traffic that they anticipate from that, from the batch plant. And I'm just wondering, and it doesn't appear that there's anything, that there's nothing said about that, so what's, I just am, I guess curious and just wondering how concerns like that are dealt with in approval of projects, you know, such as this one. Like, for example, if indeed the road fails because of the, you know, increase in traffic and so on, I mean, is the county putting itself on the hook for road upgrades if indeed they're needed for this? I mean, is that, you know, does that, with this approval, are they really saying that yes, and the county then will approve the road, or, I mean, improve the road if needed?
Sure. Brittany Moll, Environment and Planning Supervisor. As part of this request, this is just the request for the dirt work for the site. I believe that those, or, excuse me, those concerns were brought up during the rezone.
Right.
So that was, those concerns were addressed during that public testimony. This just pertains to the dirt work that's being done on the site.
So how was it, how was that concern addressed?
Well, Mark, I know the board of commissioners voted on this one. I think you were on the board after that one, right?
Well, I was. We had a great deal of discussion as to the displacement of weight. Those vehicles that they're going to be using have, I believe, I might ask you, I think, 26 wheels that the weight is dispersed upon as opposed to a regular 18-wheeler or other types of trucks, like dump trucks with pups and that kind of stuff. And there's a very short section of Dias Road that is not adequate, so to speak, as far as width is concerned and that. But most of it is adequate. They're already running larger semi-trucks coming out of the plastics plant, coming out of the existing asphalt plant. And so could I say that if the road got torn up, that we wouldn't be liable? I don't think I have the knowledge to say that, to be honest with you. But I believe from listening to several hours of testimony, that the conclusion came to that it's not going to do the damage that they're worried about.
Right. And if I remember correctly, too, those trucks have to be rated, the roads have a certain rated weight, and those trucks have to be able to meet that weight to be on.
Correct.
And that was some of the testimony that was here as well. Those vehicles can only go on that road if they're, can carry, if that road can carry X amount of weight, and they can only carry the trucks that can carry X amount of weight.
I see.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that's the way I understood it from the testimony, and of course, you guys got way more than we did.
Yeah.
I see. All right, well, thank you.
All right, was that, is that all that you had questions about?
Yes.
All right. So then I guess at this point, the recommendation was to approve construction permit CP 1713 with the following 11 conditions. I'd entertain a motion for approval if there's no other questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item 15.
Sure. Item 15, can I ask one thing of AV? Can we turn it down in here just a hair? All right. Item 15, layout plat 1743, to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot Five of Reynolds Stage Stop Subdivision. The applicant Kathleen Byron and William Freitag, surveying agents, renter associates, and I don't see them in the audience today. The applicant is looking to reconfigure the interior lot lines for Seven Hills Placer MS 1506 subdivision and Seven Hills Load MS 2077 subdivision to create Lot Five of Reynolds Stage Stop subdivision. Just like in the staff report, I'm going to refer to them as MS 2077 and MS 1506, just to make it easy here forward. As you can see, MS 1506 is actually a very large, kind of odd-shaped lot, but we're only really focusing on the furthest southern portions, which are right here. So the lines in red are the current lot lines. The line in yellow is the reconfiguration of the lot lines. And here's a photo of, or screenshot of this actual proposed reconfiguration of the lot lines. Currently, MS 2077 is 16.18 acres, is zoned general agriculture, and is legal nonconforming for its lot size as you need 40 acres minimum in the general ag. There is a barn located, a stage barn, they call it, located on the subject property, which Department of Equalization believes was built sometime in the 40s and the 50s, so no building permits were required at that time. On that subject property, this, we had noticed that there, during a site visit, that there is a cemetery. Whoops, this is not calibrated, sorry. There's a cemetery on the property located right about there. And state law requires that all cemeteries have a cemetery plat, and there's also conditional use permits that are required through Pennington County, through the planning commission. We have not been able to come up with any information on this cemetery's location. The applicant says that the National Forest Service provided them some information and that the registered deeds staff has provided them information on the cemetery plat. Planning staff asked registered deeds staff to look through their information and see what they could find. They were unable to find anything on the cemetery, and National Forest Service, when they commented back, didn't mention the cemetery at all. Renter associates, when they were out there, they didn't know that there was a cemetery on the property, and they didn't include it in their site plan either. The applicant again says that she has information for it, so as one of the conditions and per the email that we sent her, we're asking her for that paperwork because we haven't been able to find anything. She says it also does not belong to her, that section of property. It belongs to the previous owners, the Reynolds. So it's not anything that's really going to stop the layout plat. It may stop a minor plat until we figure it out, but it's not anything that we haven't dealt with before. So there is a process in place to get it fixed. MS 1506, the larger of the two lots, is 63.8 acres, currently zoned general agriculture. Again, there's a minimum of 40 acres required in general ag, and even with this interior lot line adjustment, it's going to exceed that 40-acre minimum. The proposed Lot Five is going to be 23.002 acres, zoned general ag, again, minimum 40 acres, so they'll have to do a lot, request a lot size variance, or rezone the property and request a comprehensive plan amendment. This lot will also contain all the existing buildings. Here's some pictures that you can see of the subject property. There's a cemetery up there on the hill. I know what this is. This is a view from the cemetery down. And here's a close-up of the buildings that renter was able to find on the subject property. One of them, they labeled, if you noticed, they labeled it an outhouse, which has, of course, implications in our world. So the staff that was out there didn't believe that it actually was used as an outhouse, didn't pay it any particular mind when he was there. When we did get the information, revised site plan that came back, and it had outhouse labeled, now the burden is going to be on the landowner to have, you know, we have to go back out there and prove that it's not an outhouse, that it's been abandoned for some time, which we believe it is, we just need to confirm that. Again, for the layout plat, it's not going to hold up anything. There's also a conditional use permit that exists on the subject properties, which was approved back in 1996 for resort area. Now, this resort area, from what we understand, hasn't been used in over a decade. It does not fall under the current conditional use permit rule of two years to establish, and if you cease the use of the conditional use permit for one year after that, it automatically expires. That wasn't put into place until, I believe, 2010, so this wouldn't fall under that. The applicant was unaware of the existing conditional use permit. Of course, having a conditional use permit for a resort area kind of piqued their interest. So she's mulling it over whether she's going to continue it, request some changes to it, update it, or end it. So we're just waiting to hear back from her on that one. This was routed through the Interdepartmental Review. County Highway Department just mentioned that there are two approaches on the subject property, and there will still be two approaches on the subject property, no more. So nothing out of the ordinary for them. County Environmental Planning Supervisor mentioned that the applicant's use of the existing outhouse may be allowed if it's pumped and inspected to determine if the subject outhouse is in conformance with Section 204J as a vault privy, and that operating permits will be needed for the existing onsite wastewater treatment systems as there is one on the subject property. Registered deeds came back and just mentioned that there needs to be some changes to the owner's certificate for the FKA formerly known as Kathleen E. Fritz, so just have to change that. The applicant's request will not increase the number of lots in the area. This is a reconfiguration of interior lot lines only. The conditional use permit 9605 will either need to be ended or amended by the landowner. The existing outhouse, as noted on the structural exhibit created by renter, must be further investigated to determine the next course of action. More information from the landowner, excuse me, is needed regarding the existing cemetery, and staff will include conditions to that effect. Staff recommends that the existing structures be removed from the proposed plat. We don't like to see structures on plats because then if you remove the structure or, then you have to change the plat, and we don't want to do that. So we're making that recommendations up to the landowner to what they want to do. But for purposes of the layout plat, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request. Staff recommends approval of layout plat 1743 with 13 conditions.
Any questions for PJ?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yeah, are they just doing this just to, do they give you a reason, or do we really not ask them?
To sell one of the properties, I don't know which one.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, go ahead.
PJ?
Yep.
Just for my educational purposes, what are the regulations for a vault privy?
I don't know Bible and verse, but as long as, if it's sealed, and again, don't quote me on this, then, and it passes inspection and it meets the requirements in 204J, then it'd be allowed. It'd basically be anything different than like a National Forest Service bathroom in the back country kind of a thing, but it has to meet specific criteria, but it has to be, just like Denke that was here a while ago for conditional use permit, it has to be pumped and then inspected, and the inspection is what gives us the information to determine if it meets the requirements or not.
Gotcha.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? PJ, I got a question about the cemetery.
Sure.
So what's the process with that? So I understand there's no, as far as we know officially, there's no documentation about it. She's saying it's owned by someone else.
Previous owners.
Previous owners.
Correct.
So how does that work out with this, if they're adjusting these lines or anything? Is it going to be a carved-out section if there is documentation for that, or how does that all work?
So I had mentioned to her that if it is still owned by the previous owners, and it is its own cemetery plat, that you might want to provide an access easement to it because maybe if Catherine doesn't own it, the next owners might not want the family to have access to it. So the first thing is to find out what is in place for the cemetery. Then after that, we would have the conditional use permit done through us, and then they would have to record the cemetery plat through the registered deeds, which is not a process that we do. They can do that with their agent and registered deeds only. But come the minor plat process, we'll want to find out exactly what's going on with that cemetery and if an access easement is needed. Does that answer your question, Chris?
It does, just in general. I just want to know what it could end up being. So.
We've dealt with cemeteries before, but usually they're owned by the family that owns the land.
Right. Okay. Any further questions for PJ? Seeing none, I don't see anybody else in the audience, so I don't assume anybody in the audience has any questions. So the recommendation is to approve 1743 with the following 13 conditions. I'd entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 16.
Item 16. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the November 13, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, with the exception of Plan Unit Development Review 1603 for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto. This item was continued to be heard at a February 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Any questions for PJ? Go ahead, Kathy.
Please. I actually listened to the county commission debate that item, and, I mean, on video, and I have, it struck me as a little odd, let's say, that deny, the first vote that was taken denying this actually made the PUD go away.
Right. They denied the extension of it. Correct.
And so I started looking at, you know, what I could see in the zoning ordinance about PUDs, and I didn't really even, and maybe I missed it, but I don't really even see where that process of extending it, I mean, even is described. Because, I mean, I think that is a tremendous vulnerability for people out there that have PUDs and build a business around them, that they could just go away. And it, I mean, it just struck me as a real, if I were a business owner, that would be an uncertainty that would be very difficult to manage, and I do think that there's, we need to, within reason, you know, get processes in place, you know, that provide appropriate certainty for landowners and business owners and so on. So my real question is, in looking back at the PUD description, I don't even see where that process of extending it is even described, or those, you know, reviewing it. And I know that this was reviewed for a particular reason, you know, the tent, whether it be a temporary or permanent, and I can certainly understand that a condition could be rescinded or changed or something, but through a review or this or that, but to review it and just to completely do away with the PUD, I just, anyway, if you could help me understand that process and where I might find some more information on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. It's not in the ordinance. You're absolutely right about that. The PUDs are reviewed just like conditional use permits are reviewed, and both can be not extended or ended. It's up to the landowner to meet the conditions, to get that approval, to get the extension, so you kind of earn the extension of it. Also, a PUD is kind of two permits in one. It's a conditional use permit and a rezone. So, because when the property's rezoned to Plan Unit Development, so that's one step. And then all the conditions allow the landowner to do the different things that they want to do on the property, more so than, say, a conditional use permit would. Remember, a conditional use permit can be taken away by the Planning Commission if it so desires. Usually, I'd say 99% of the time, we'll work with the landowner, we'll continue an item. We don't end things lightly. And we, staff had recommended approval of the extension of the PUD.
Right, I know. But in this case, I mean, I understand that if the PUD owner, yes, applicant, is, it's even violation of conditions, you know, one or more conditions. I understand that would be grounds for terminating a PUD, but in this case, they weren't in violation of any conditions.
That probably a good question for the commissioners.
They weren't. And I guess, I just think that it's really difficult to know the rules exactly, you know, since they're not written down, and it makes perfect sense to me that if, as I said, if they were in violation of conditions, yes. But I couldn't, I didn't see that in this case, so I just.
And some of the history for the evangelist is they had multiple conditional use permits for the bed and breakfast, and they wanted to add more. And they wanted to add special uses for the other properties that them and their LLCs and family owners had owned. So there's 33 lots in this one PUD. Instead of having multiple conditional use permits, that was more vulnerable than doing a PUD. So their recommendation was to do, take a PUD, put everything together into one, which is why you have the 43 conditions, because they have specific requests for specific things on the lots. Most of those conditions, there actually were 59 to begin with, because they tried to incorporate a lot of their covenants into the PUD because the county doesn't enforce covenants unless, unless in the case of vacation homes and they're specifically mentioned. So they wanted to have that protection. During the discussions with the board, they had taken some of those conditions out. They'd like to have more, but they were trying to get it approved, so they did what the board had asked and took some of those conditions out. So I know there's a lot of conditions there, but most of them are at the applicant's request.
Yeah, well, that doesn't, that's not a concern that I have, anyway, but.
That's kind of history.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. But is there any plans underway to try to remedy the lack of explanation and, you know, prescription about how that review process and extension process works?
Yep. It actually noted, not, well, it was noted mainly for the conditional use permits, not for PUD, but we'll make it a note now for that when we change the zoning ordinance.
Okay. That'd be appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome. We got pages and pages of things for that one.
Not having listened to the video, then, what was the reason given to terminate the PUD?
Question again?
What was the reason given, then, to terminate the PUD? You said.
Basically, what they wanted was a review of the PUD earlier so that they could make decisions as to.
Yeah, for their business.
Be able to book out into the future.
Yeah.
And so there was no plans to terminate the PUD.
Okay. But from what I understood Kathy's saying was that in essence, what happened was the PUD's terminated.
The first vote, yes.
I believe that that was a motion that was made with a misunderstanding, not knowing, not knowing the far-reaching effects.
The consequences.
The consequences of, once it was explained what those consequences were, the person that made the motion said, oh, that's not what I want.
Oh, okay, so it hasn't been terminated? It's just.
It hasn't, no.
Okay, okay.
We're basically, yeah, there's a review in February, so we're basically, so take the last six weeks out that have happened with this PUD and requesting it be reviewed earlier and the two hearings, we're back to where we would have been if we didn't do anything. There's a review in February.
Okay.
But if I, my understanding was that when they, the motion was to approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission, wasn't that right?
To review it earlier.
And that failed.
Correct.
And so the fact that it failed, then, the consensus that I heard from the legal person and so on was that by not approving this extension, then the PUD was terminated.
And therefore, their business was terminated.
Would be terminated. And so I'm thinking that's real, they're putting people, the commissioners, in a box if you have two choices, approve it as we recommended, or the PUD is terminated. Thinking that's not a good option, so.
So then maybe my question is, then what was the reason given for not allowing the earlier review? Because we tend to accommodate landowners.
The earlier review was allowed. That's why it was heard. The earlier review was approved by the Planning Commission and then also approved by the board at their next meeting, and we sent letters out.
Oh, that's right, because their scheduled review wasn't until like May or March or so.
February, yeah. So that's why it was heard now.
All right, okay.
Because they have said it publicly now. They are, they were going out of town for an extended period of time.
But if I may, and this is just fresh in my mind because I just listened to it this morning, that's why, but the real concern in why our, the Planning Commission's recommendation wasn't approved was that they wanted to compel the business owners and the neighbors to try to come, get together, and so that, to try to reduce the level of acrimony that apparently has been plaguing that situation for multiple years.
Correct. So we heard quite a bit of that at our. Correct, so we heard quite a bit of that at our Planning Commission.
Yes.
Yes, we did.
But from what I could see, the Evangelistos had put all of the conditions that, on themselves, and none on.
Their neighbors.
Their neighbors, and so it was interesting, and not only that, but three of the neighbors moved in after that business was established, and.
And now they're complaining about it.
Now they're complaining about it.
Yeah.
So I think that there was some leaders in that group that got the rest of them on board to come and complain. Just my assessment.
So it's operating as normal right now under the existing forty-three conditions, I believe it is, that was approved back in May.
Right, yes, that was my, that was my understanding after the, after the vote was reconsidered.
Yep.
Yeah, after the motion was reconsidered, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no worries, any further questions? Seeing none, items from the public, item number seventeen, but seeing none.
Public.
All right, number eighteen, items from the staff.
Sure, we got a few all the way down to G today. Just a reminder, the holiday luncheon is on December fourth, starting at eleven-thirty in the large conference room upstairs, and if you haven't by now, please RSVP to Jerry. Any questions on that before we go on to the next one? Item B, Section 204-G, Special Animal Keeping Regulations Committee, we did make the front page again about this, so not a big deal, I've received two phone calls of people that said they were interested in joining this. They do realize it's more than just chickens, but because it's, sounds fun to say, and it's good to write, that's why it's been called the Chicken Committee, but it's not for real. Special Animal Keeping Regulation Committee. I don't know if they have applied or not, I don't know if we have more than the five that originally were interviewed by the board.
I was going to ask, is there any more that have been?
There were no more.
No more that have applied yet?
Right, it's being advertised again, so they have, I don't know what their cutoff date is.
That's what I was about to say, what's our cutoff date to just say this is what we're going with?
I think it's this Wednesday.
I think so.
I think it's Wednesday.
Twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Just a reminder that the Tuesday, December eighteenth Planning Commission meeting starts at two PM, not nine AM. And one of the items that will be heard on December eighteenth will be the mining ordinance draft. This has been reviewed by staff, reviewed by State's Attorney's Office, and also the reviews and recommend, and the changes have been approved by the mining committee itself, and they'll be coming to you for a hearing on December eighteenth, and we're going to try and get that draft to you before that meeting, far in advance, outside the packet, because it's rather big.
That's what I was going to just ask, but thanks for addressing that.
No problem, it's just being formatted right now, so once that's done, I'm sure we could probably get it out to you, maybe an email might be the best way, but we'll send it to Planning Commission and the board at the same time, so everybody gets the information at the same time. Next item is that the Highway Department has a new building, and they have, are having an open house on the twenty-ninth, so that's Wednesday. It's from one to three o'clock, and it's located at three-six-zero-one Campbell Street. It's a pretty nice building, actually, haven't been inside, but only seen the outside.
It's one to what?
Three-six-zero-one Campbell Street from one to three.
What's the time, one to three?
Yes, ma'am. Next item is, pretty much everybody in the county has new phones now, so IT has been working on that for a few days, so phones pretty much work for incoming calls and outgoing, there's some internal issues that they're working on, so if you can't get ahold of us during a phone call, just be patient, they're working out some of the bugs and transitioning thing. Anything further on that one, Jerry, since you're our liaison for that? No?
Be very patient.
Okay. Last item's going to, I have to open up Rapid Map here, but it didn't look like it was open here, it's just kind of an FYI on something that's, oh, if it's not on here, it has to be downloaded, so we'll skip this. So Rapid City has a plating jurisdiction, we called the three-mile buffer, but it's not always three miles everywhere, it can be as low, as far down to about a half mile in some places, but mostly three. Box Elder also has its own plating jurisdiction, and they overlap a few times, so there are some properties that are located in three plating jurisdictions in very few cases. We got a message from Box Elder the other day that they're looking to give up a significant portion of their plating jurisdiction to the west, to the east. We were unaware of it until they sent something to us, their Planning Commission's already approved it as a recommendation to their city council. It's not going to mean much more for us, other than more, more plats that could come in if people want to subdivide property, but they're not asking for support of the county at the commission or the board level, we're just letting you know, if I had the map, I'd love to pull it up for you, but, oh wait, there it is, duh, missed it, sorry about that. We haven't dealt with this before, we've never had anybody try to take or give up plating jurisdiction, usually they, usually they take more. Let me just get this up for you here. It would fix one problem, and probably, probably would have to be done through a few memos and agreements through everybody, but let me see here, during some meetings, let me just put this up here, okay, yellow is City of Rapid City plating jurisdiction, and gray is Box Elders, and the white is ours. And see if that still stays. So what they're looking to do is get rid of this little peninsula right here, that kind of streaks right down between the valley and the airport, that might be something that might be better off going to Rapid City, but that's for future discussion. Over to the east, and then, again, this isn't, this isn't configured, so I'm going to try and figure out, but they want to, I won't be able to do it. They're basically looking to give us everything south of this section line where the pointer is, over to about here, and then straight up. So it's a significant portion of their plating jurisdiction. They say they don't have any, any plans on growing that far out in twenty-five to fifty years, so they didn't want to have to do any of it, I guess.
Where did the three-mile deal come from, is that state statute or something?
It's in statute, yes.
So then how do they just say, well, we don't want to do that?
We don't know, I said, we haven't dealt with this before. Box Elder believes that there isn't anything formally written between the county and Box Elder that that exists, that it's just been one of those things that they've done forever. So they think, at least the last I heard, that they can just dump it essentially. So we're trying to figure out where the documentation is, if any, that put that in place, just like the one that we have for Rapid City.
I think the sliver thing makes sense from a, you know, being contiguous and not having, they used to call that kind of stuff flaglot type stuff, but, so the sliver makes sense to me, but just to say we don't, we don't want to do our three miles is odd to me.
Well, originally this came up in a meeting between the mayors and some board members, and there was going to be a trade between the city, between the two cities for that sliver. That was the last we heard, probably six to eight months ago, then we received an email that they had already brought it to their Planning Commission, and they're looking to give this up.
And then to say that they don't think it's going to develop in the next twenty-five to fifty years?
That's not where they're focusing their development, they said.
It'll be continuous from Box Elder to New Underwood in twenty-five years.
Our feeling is, once it's, giving it away may be easy, getting it back's going to be, might be a little more difficult. That's our feeling, and we're going to let Box Elder know that, every staff person has commented, saying you just might want to keep it. If you have a temporary staffing issue, it might not be a good idea to give up permanent plating jurisdiction.
Interesting.
So that's just something that's coming.
Any further questions for PJ? All right, all the items?
Nothing further.
Nothing further.
Well, can the county say we don't want it?
Supposedly could.
That's what you're trying to figure out, right?
I think if we don't take it, somebody else will.
Okay.
You can go start your own little town, maybe, I don't know. Item number nineteen, items from the membership? Anyone?
I guess I'd just like to remind you, I'll be Skyping the January and February meetings, so I'll check with those guys and make sure that everything's working, nothing's changed.
Hopefully not.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we only have one meeting in December, is that correct?
We have two.
Two.
Four and eighteen.
The four and the eighteenth.
Yeah, the eighteenth is at two o'clock, is at two o'clock, and the fourth is at nine.
And just so you know, I will not be at the eighteenth.
Okay.
I have a quick question. I remember when we went through the alternative energy ordinance revision, and it seemed to me that when there were comments coming in and revisions being done, that that process wasn't really, we kind of did it item by item in the meeting, and is that, is that the preference on doing these ordinance-type revisions?
Large ones?
Yeah.
I believe it was done a different way this last time, where the, are you going to do it that way again, or how, do you have a plan in place? They had made the changes to a Word document, and I believe they went through and accepted a change or changed it again, but Michelle was the one that headed that up, I'll leave it up to her.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, to avoid the difficulty of making numerous minor changes to the proposed ordinance, both the Planning Department, as well as myself, thoroughly went through the fifteen pages of ordinance, even down to Word choices. Then we called the committee, the mining committee, back so that they could vet all of our proposed changes, and the purpose behind that is hopefully you will, upon your very first reading, have a very clean draft to work from, so hopefully you won't have so many changes or amendments, and this is the first, actually, it's the first time I've been involved in this process, and I have suggested to the Planning Department that in, for instance, in relation to the large animal ordinance, that this become kind of the process that's followed, that there should be a thorough vetting and then bring the committee back to make those final changes.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
And so ultimately, the goal is that it would be considering the whole ordinance as a whole, instead of us kind of nitpicking at it, is that?
Well, you still are free to nitpick, but the goal is that you get a much more polished draft to work from, so hopefully, you know, it might be a matter of saying, well, page one is fine, look at page two, I want to change the wording on paragraph G, or I have a question about paragraph G, but hopefully it'll just be much more workable that way.
So if I could ask a question?
Go ahead, Kathy.
So just because I'm new here, so the mining ordinance, the draft that we'll see in the next short while, and will be, the first reading will be on the eighteenth, is that right?
Depends on what? Right, it depends on what the Planning Commission does with the hearing.
Right, that's the, it's advertised to be heard for the Planning Commission on the eighteenth.
On the eighteenth. So there's been a committee in place that has worked on this and brought it up to this point, and so just, and the committee was established to do this, for this one, just in a similar way as the Special Animal Keeping Regulations Committee?
And Vacation Home Rentals from a few years ago.
Yeah, so the standard procedure, and that's been going on for several months, I assume, yeah, okay, very good, thank you.
I was on that committee.
Oh, okay.
So yes, it was a time.
Okay.
All right, any further from the membership? If not, that would bring us to item twenty of adjournment, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.
Thank you.